And so.
Either we must have some.
Well, and I'm sorry for not including Jessica. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation in its soul. Bob, we have approval of minutes?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just want to let everyone in the room know that we are being video recorded and audio recorded as per policy.
So moved on approval.
Thank you. Were there any changes? Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor of say aye?
Alright.
Both motion passes and approval of claims?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions on the claims?
There's that one for us on the freezer, so walk in. Professor, we did that last year. We had a failure of some sort and it crashed. But we caught it because of my note, we're on that notification thing, twenty-four hours day. And I was able to get a hold of them and they were, he responded it, he was here probably at seven in the morning. And we were able to catch it and hold it back. What happened on that one, the compressor of their, there's a coil behind it. And put that vibrations on the rubber mouse and created a little teeny hole and lost just enough that it raised that temperature up. Wasn't all of it though, kept it steady at like forty. You were, we were really close and everything, you know, everything was so frozen and then they replaced that one end and stuff, so.
So she might do it again.
They reinstated, they reinstated all that, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, that's factory though, that's, that was the, that was just the factory and created a little.
Okay, thanks.
I have a quick question. What is this Desiree Killigle speaking? So she is coming to speak to us about our Indian education. So you receive money from OPI for Indian education. And you have to provide so much training on the Indian education and then spend your money based on that.
Sure, she's part of the Golden Triangle Cooperative, cooperative. And so that, that is the bulk of the training we're receiving. The staff is receiving on September twentieth.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Okay, all in favor of say aye?
Alright.
Both motion passes. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Is that one thing to share in communications to inform the board and other than that?
So, as it was last Thursday, I had a couple meetings, a couple appointments and a meeting in Great Falls. And on my way home after my desk appointment, I came across this white bus stranded alongside the road, the other side of Sim or other side of Carter. And it was the Sims bus. And lights are flashing, the bus is pulled over and I kept driving. I said, huh, that must be the bus that's on the way to our volleyball match. Well, about ten minutes after, on this side of Carter, here comes the Fort Ben bus. And so I was so impressed and I got a call from the SIM superintendent. Who called to thank us for Jamie got right on it and they recalled and Paul and he sent our bus to collect them and haul this kids from Sims here. The girls from Sims were really impressed actually. And their superintendent took the time to call and just thank us as a school district. So applaud to Jamie and Paul for jumping on. And he, he offered to compensate us in some way. I said, you know, we're good neighbors and the fact is they, they would do the same for us.
And they did. We're actually, I would say even now, a couple of years ago, our bus broke down right coming home from Missoula, right out in the mountains. And thankfully, we had some mechanically fine boys that fixed it, but we were still a little nervous and so we went to Sims. And then Sims let us bring their bus back here. So I told them we're even now we're good.
That's what neighbors do. And so it was really tickled and just very, very complimentary and grateful. So. And the girls got, we got started about thirty minutes late, I guess, but uh.
But everybody was more than cordial and.
Yeah, yeah. So it worked. So just a little pat on the back for a couple of our folks.
And thanks to Harry for the last minute bus driving.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, under the board chair's report, um, says Mcel under here, but I don't know if there's anything I specifically need to mention. Just if anyone to go.
Yeah, I guess it's still open to any board members who want to go. To Mcel in the middle of October in Missoula. And I know that Callie mentioned there's a lot of new policy changes and stuff this year. And a lot to learn. So it'd be a good year to go.
Okay. And then finally, thank you so much to all of the teachers who are here tonight. I know that makes a long day for you, but it's nice for the board, I think, to meet new faces and have a chance to get acquainted because not everyone gets into the school to do that. So I thought I'd ask you all to come meet the board and Paul or Pat introduce you.
Yeah, so we are, we are tickled, delighted to offer to welcome four of our five new staff members that are at the Middle School High School this year. One of them is coaching volleyball tonight and hopes to make the October meeting, just FYI. But it was an incredible hiring season for us. We had incredible candidates that we have hired and our quality of the teaching at our school has improved with their presence here. And so I, I told them, I was going to ask them to stand and tell, just tell, tell us what they teach and, and just want to welcome them and thank them so much for the positive contributions and the positive start to the school.
Amber? Hey, well, I'm Amber Disney. This will be my sixth year teaching and all those cool arts, physical art and facts as well. So I am, I'm just excited to be here. Pat was my principal when I was at junior high school.
So that's why I came here. So, yeah.
She still wanted to come.
Yeah. I've heard you have a lot of kids this year. And thank you for being willing to teach facts.
Yeah. And we'll see how it goes.
Hi, my name's Eric Lennington. I'm a K12 music teacher and I'm extremely grateful to be back.
Happy to be back.
I'm Jeff Blitzer. I teach P E and I'm a weight class artist.
Where are you from? I keep having people ask me where you're from and I can't.
The Boise area of Tacoma.
Okay.
The better half of that. That was nice traffic.
Hi, Kelly Bouchard. Some of you have seen me referee volleyball. I've done that for twenty-one years. I'm your new high school math teacher. You can thank Pat Gold for that. He chased me for about a year. I was working at the prison while he was chasing me. I told the kids the very first day, because I taught social emotional behavior to the middle school kids who are now freshmen, sophomores and juniors. And I told them, they said, where'd you been? I said, in prison. And they're facing teaching in person. So, yeah, I'm super happy to be here, really enjoying my time right now with the kids and hopefully they learn though.
Yes, on behalf of the board, just thank you for coming and really appreciate your contributions to the district and you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
I saw the accent.
Nice.
Right. Good evening. Sorry for keeping one of yours away and rescheduled the volleyball game tonight. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. I'm sorry for making you miss your daughter.
Well, you're missing your daughter too.
They're in the third set, it's one and one for the JV and they're up in the third set right now. So.
I actually got to watch my.
C squad, one and three. So. So it's off to a great start this year. Since I've seen you, I've got some numbers for you. Football has twenty-seven players and one manager. Middle school football has twenty-one players on their roster. High school volleyball has twenty-six players with one manager, half of them being freshmen. Middle school volleyball is sixteen. Cross country has seven, with four, four, excuse me, four girls and three boys in high school. And the middle school is the opposite. They have four boys and three girls in middle school. Middle school tennis has seventeen players, fifteen girls and two boys and a manager. And then cheer has five interested. There are four girls and one boy interested. And so we've got a lot of kids in those activities. That's not even counting, you know, the FFA that's going to get rolling and the robotics that's going to get rolling, the pet band that has great numbers this year. I was thinking twenty-five, he said twenty-four. So we have a lot of kids involved and that's, that's a pretty awesome thing to see. Tonight, I would like to officially recommend the following. I've talked to Amy. And she would like to stay on this year for speech, drama and debate. But also in talking to her and, and in our process of looking, she would be interested in helping, in a sense, train the next person who could step in. So my recommendation tonight to you would be to hire Amy Hansen as our speech, drama and debate coach. And then as a volunteer, I would like to recommend Emily Wicks as a volunteer speech, drama and debate coach. And then also her right-hand helper for the past few, past few years, Ross Hansen.
Can we do those all together? Would you rather do the coach and the volunteer separate?
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'm thankful she's willing to do it.
Yes, yeah. Which means, on a side note, before, sorry, we most likely will have a speech, drama and speech and drama meet at home. We're still trying to figure out where that could fit. So be prepared for us to bother you with the hopes of volunteering.
Any more comments on that? Okay, all in favor of say aye?
Alright.
Both? Motion pass.
For our other, one of our other avenues that we've been pursuing, cheer. Through a lot of discussions and some help from our students that are interested in cheer. I had a pair of ladies approach me. They would like to volunteer their time and be volunteer coaches. They will still, you know, follow this, follow the guidelines and everything, but they want to volunteer their time for fall only. To get us through fall. I have some discussions still happening for winter. So hopefully we'll be able to go from there. But for, for the rest of this season, pending the background checks coming in, my recommendation would be to hire Julie Robertson, who we use as our, is it our club? Is that what it's called? Art Club Leader and Alicia Bach as volunteer coaches for cheer in this fall season.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of say aye?
Alright.
Both? Motion pass. How long do they have to, do they have to have a certain number of practices or is it not really governed by, you know, not really?
They can just jump in. Yeah, and, and there will be a few things. When you do stunts and flying, you have to have certified people. So we will just ground cheer. So there'll be a few things. But I, with five, that's a, that's a pretty reasonable doable thing to not have to worry about. So no, we will get rolling as soon as we can. Um, schedules have been in constant flux due to enrollment or eligibility or referees and whatnot. So we have the lucky problem of having a lot of people on our rosters. So I was able to schedule a match with Sims last week, adding C squad to get our girl some time, which bumped our middle school off. So they, they had enough openings that we could travel there today. So that, that's why we threw this one on there. So we can get some of those kids some extra time that aren't getting a lot of time. We have the same thing with our little guy football. So I've added a few sixth grade games so we can get some in there. And then there are a few more C squads that have reached out if we can make all of the scheduled juggling work. We'll put them on there if we can. The biggest one that you need to know about is next week, our first home football game is being moved. So originally it was scheduled on Friday. We are moving it to Saturday. We, we haven't had to move yet. And it's, it's our time. Even if there's a rare shortage out there, there's just not enough to cover them. So when you can do what you can do to support that, we need to do that.
Is that the home, that's not homecoming?
That is not, no. No. That is right before homecoming starts.
What time do they get moved to?
Seven. So we're just bumping it straight to Saturday night, just how it would be Friday, straight over to Saturday.
Four and seven.
Four and seven except four, sorry, thank you, instead of four thirty.
Alright, yeah, okay. Your volleyball is away that night?
It's during the day.
Oh, okay.
Box elder plays during the day. So that'll, that'll have, hopefully our, a little bit of our crowd back. Our band is traveling that day. Eric is taking, Mr. Lennington is taking the pet band who can go to Montana State Bobcat game to play in MSU Band Days where they will perform at the halftime show of that game. So we'll be without a few, but we'll be okay. Um. Homecoming will start then the following week. So it'll be the week of September twenty-second. Monday, the twenty-third will be our bonfire where we have asked you to come join us and serve up some food before. So if you are willing and able, we will accept your help. And feel free to come out and join us that week to watch all the activities. Tuesday will be powder puff of that week. Wednesday will be men's volleyball. Thursday will be volleyball against Big Sandy. Friday, our, our football game against Shoto. And then we have a second volleyball game on our homecoming this year. It's Saturday against CJI. So we should have everything on the calendar and we would love to see you and have you there.
We'd like it noted that the superintendent who's a Grizz fan is allowing the band to go to MSU Band Days.
I'm even trying to get.
Happily, happily allowing it.
I'm sure we've never been invited to a Grizz band.
You know, I'm Grizz.
It's a great experience, I would say.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited to see it again.
It's really awesome. It's really awesome.
Um, if you hear any complaints, the NFHS cameras are up and running. Of course, right away, there are a couple little bumps, but I think we've got them going. There is one issue with our score not connecting on our gym camera. Luckily, you can see it when it, when it goes to the server, you can see it. I've been on, even when I wasn't here Saturday, I, I was at the MSU football game on the computer and the phone with the tech. So I've been on through two games with them. And then Carly and I had a meeting the other night with them. We have a few things that we're looking at that I'm hoping an update and things on their end will fix. We'll, we'll see Thursday. They have some things that are supposedly, supposedly going to help us, I think, being sent our way. And if it doesn't, if we can't figure it out, then we'll have a tech get out here. But it's, it's the smallest of problems as you just have to wait till the camera pans over to that side. But hopefully it will be fixed soon. Tomorrow, I'm going to attend the Northern Sea Division meeting in Great Falls. And then we're just going to keep rolling with our activities. Do you have any questions for me?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Here it's a lot.
Thank you. The schedule has been more than the spring schedules this year is. I'm ready for that to be done, but it'll be okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hopefully, pretty quick to see maybe. We had that special board meeting and a lot of the stuff was ironed out. Thanks to Larry. He continues to help and he's training. He just walked by over here and he'll have him as a hire this evening. We interviewed that man and he took a job and he's been working with Larry for a week and a half and grew a conscience to see that's what he's been doing for most of his life. And his name is Bob Yolthers and he really likes working here and we like having him here and Larry likes training him and they're having a good time together and so Larry you'll see at the events, kind of hitting a mess up in the stands like he always does. And then we asked him to just kind of come over when he feels like it and he's cleaning the triangle room and just, just do some odds and ends and stuff like that, just to kind of keep him busy. So he'll see Larry. Tori's doing a real good job again at the elementary and I think that Rox is going to test it out that he's helping out in all areas down there. And of course, Bob is new up here. But it, it's really great to have somebody and not have to do that. The city crew moved the bleachers a week ago and, and that's our normal timing to do it right before the game. There'll be vision to fire pit in a week. And so I do thank them for coming over and doing that. On the thank you list tonight is Callie. She worked with Gary and they're looking for the best possible scenarios that they can on getting this all ironed out. And I'll go into that in just a minute. And then of course, Rox and Connie in the office. There you go. If, if you're ever around the office or you come in there and some of you do, their heads are down and there's papers all over the place. I don't know how in the hell they get it done, but they're filing and, and keeping things going. And Kelly and Gary worked through a lot of the scenarios to make this work so that we didn't have to go into the longest bidding process ever. So and we'll go through that in just a second. The blances are still continuing on the upward, on the, the pline. In our sprinkler crew, they came over, James sent them over and worked on the outside as they did last year. Just one of those things that they wanted to do and, and help out. And they did the outside fences and stuff like that. If you notice it, the ditch is completely done and down to nothing. And so that's our sprinkler crew. We're finishing up with the leaks at the elementary with Pyco on the main lines and the four. If you've been down there with me, you'll see that some of those lines are exposed. They had a bad solder on most of them. And of course, there, there is no warranty or anything like that. We, we expired that years ago. And it's all right on the four inch. It's not, not up in that twos or threes or anything in the classroom. So we've isolated it down there and they're finishing that up. The contractors will be hired just as soon as possible. Gary has the documents ready, probably Thursday. Talk to him today at length. And we can go into a hiring process at that point. I'm assuming that we'll have to have a special committee meeting next week to review those. He has some people in mind and once he gets the documents over here to Callie, we can go ahead and hire. So by that board meeting and everybody goes, well, we were hoping yes, but we also saved two weeks of by him getting on this. And he was still working on printing out the plans and stuff like that. He's still working on that. So he hoped by Thursday that we're ready to hire. So we're still two weeks ahead of where we would have been if we would have waited till tonight. So it, it, it was not, you know, like, well, gee whiz. We're, we're doing good, considering the amount of process that he's had to do to get this ready to go and the documentation that he has. So we're continuing on the outside work. Camera Steve. CSE camera Steve cutting out will be here tomorrow. And start the process on the new cameras install at the elementary and up here on the TNI and, and down the hallways and stuff like that, everything that was approved. And hopefully that goes without a hitch. All the wires were there installed and stuff like that. I do ask that you guys come to the bonfire and help out. It's kind of a pleasure to have. I get it all kind of organized for you and then you guys serve the hot dogs. And it's kind of a kick to have the board there to help each and every year to disturb the hot dogs and kind of keep an eye on the kids. They have a cornhole tournament going at the same time and and just be part of it. So those that can show up at the bonfire, it's at seven and we'll do the hot dogs before or just right after. We like the bonfire day to come in and so we'll have it all ready to set up and, and ready to go for you. If there's questions?
That's one day?
No, what day?
Twenty thirty?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty thirty.
Perfect.
Any other question? You have your report obviously, so you'll cover some of it.
Not much per report.
Okay.
I think you had the same question I did.
Okay, alright. Okay.
I did have one. What was the eleven on thousand on the boiler of Pyco?
On the claims?
Yes.
That, that was for the leaking pipe stuff.
Yeah. So they all done?
No, we will not change at all. There's, they get pressurized and then in this process that, that we're going through here, we will get the traps and a few of those things. When they're doing that inline air, they'll put those screens in something like that. So. So in, in the process, and Kelly can allude to it if she wants to, there's, as, as you broke that down that evening, there's the air intake. And that process for the air. And then the stack is going to be a separate bid or separate person and then the plumbing. So there's three different entities going on here. So we don't have one complete circle. And more than likely, there's three of them crew. Well, there is, there're going to be three of them crews do it. Because you're going to have tins come in and they're not going to be doing the boiler. And we've got plumbers coming in and they're not going to do the tins and all that other stuff. So there's going to be three of them crews there.
Frigs ordered up.
Yeah, yeah, sir. We still need him to give us the documents on it. So that everything fits.
Oh, it's really. I don't imagine those are very far out.
No, no, that, that's just a matter of ordering and billings or whatever. So that's just with a couple days, three days, break. Thanks, Russ. Last thing, happy birthday to the boys on Friday. There we go.
You should have let me know.
Friday the thirteenth.
Yeah. Oh, wait, Friday the eighth.
Oh. Oh, well, all he just got done for everything, Ross will be out this weekend and Monday he'll settle. Try to.
Is it like for an extended birthday or?
Contain, contain phone calls.
Yeah, we can do that. So would you pack these around? Thanks. And she, she looks extra. In fact, okay. Let's talk about the elementary. So far, we are off to a great start. I was just telling Jamie, it seems that a lot had happened since the beginning of school. So it seems like we're up and rolling. I do want to highlight again our theme this year, which is teamwork makes the dream work. And I especially felt it today when we had Corey sub in PE, which was amazing. He's been helping with lunch as well. We have Katie, my secretary, who's been doing just an amazing job popping in and out of PE as well to make sure that everything's covered and supporting children that are coming into the office. And Russ is busy fixing the swing sets that he broke this weekend. Yes, he did jump on it. So he's gonna, he's busy fixing that, but it. Cal did, yeah. Cal helps a lot. So we are very thankful, I'm super thankful for our team this year. It's been awesome. We have a new speech pass this year as well. And she's been in house and has already helped so much just dealing with some different special ed issues and things like that. So I've been very appreciative of that. As well as some new situations that arise every day. It's always a surprise at Fort Ben Elementary, the things that we get to deal with. We had a great back to school carnival and assembly. I want to thank Mr. Poole for coming down and getting a little bit silly on the stage. So that was wonderful. Our back to school carnival was really fun. It was a little bit chaotic to start because we did grade level or we had groups that spanned grade levels, so K through six. So we only lost one kindergarten during the whole time, but we found them. So that was good. And again, I've gone to think this school fang, I don't know how many times. So, yes, lots is lots. Yeah. We had a great picture day and have had our first fire drill and our first lockdown drill. And the new phones are amazing. The lockdown drill was helpful because it was beneficial for us to see if we need to make any adjustments to intercoms or things like that. And Russ is on it, as with everything. Vision screening today for pre-K through sixth grade. So we want to definitely thank the Lions Club for that and donating their time. That's kind of an awesome. We use that almost sometimes as part of our intervention program just to make sure that kids are prepared and ready for whatever we're visually showing them. And then the, the afternoon preschool will be on the seventeenth of September. They'll come back. We are officially done with our first round of benchmarks course. And so are up and working hard. Our staff has been working so hard this year to make sure that kids. Our staff has been working so hard this year to make sure that kids are getting the interventions that they receive. Title slips are going out, lots of communication with parents this year, and so that's something that feels really awesome. They've been amazing at that. We'll have our first Yip meeting the middle of October. Um as far as in the work or in the works, uh we'll have our first little spirit rally um activity on this Friday. And and so that's where those kiddos will get back into their kind of home team groups or those K through six groups. They're gonna meet in classrooms this time just to give their spirit leader or their team leader a little bit of a better chance to know them. But again, the whole goal with those is to try to facilitate like healthy relationships between not just kindergarten through sixth grade, but with other adults in the building as well. So hopefully really working to build that teamwork or that family vibe. We'll have a September assembly on the twenty seventh and Heritage Day is the thirtieth. Mrs. Lane has been working um with Mrs. Giles and some of the other volunteers and so we've been really grateful for her being willing to volunteer on that.
No rain.
No rain. It's always rain. Ten for year, always rain. So just put in the paper that they need to bring their boots. They could have some mud boots by then. Yeah, but we're excited. We're thankful for Russ and the boards for getting. We're excited to maybe fire those boilers if it gets a little chilly, but we have letters. We're gonna make it.
It works, maybe.
Maybe, I said maybe. And like we have lots of cute letters. Yes, I should have done letters this year. Do you guys have any questions?
I have a question about these little spare groups that you.
Yeah. Sure, does the idea? Kind of, so it's like a house system is almost what they call it. So I have a couple principal friends that utilize it in billing. And they named, they like kind of created it after like the Harry Potter house system, right? But we didn't do Harry Potter. We did sports this year. So it should be the idea that you're giving children an additional home. Um besides their classroom. So it's like a K through six little group that they can kind of be a part of. And then that they're normally, most of, some of them are with their homeroom teacher, but most of them are with different staff members just to help them kind of like get acquainted.
I hit her face when she used the idea. I was like. I enjoyed it way more than I ever thought. I uh I really loved. Big kids were great with the little kids.
Well, I do feel like our staff, I mean like they're always so busy, right? So you hate to put something else on their plate. But I feel that just with um the children that we're seeing and the commonality of maybe children coming to school with a higher level of trauma. That we really need to work on making sure that our school is a welcoming um environment and so.
Six graders who are high five, you know, high five on the kids.
Yeah. Yeah, it it was, yeah, hopefully it was fun.
It was.
Hopefully this Friday activity, but too.
Your kids go, right? That's my class and I'm like, what are they gonna do in other classrooms? Those are my kids. I'm supposed to be. And I'm like, I don't know these other kids. And it was so much fun. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you. It was super entertaining too because some of the sixth graders that are maybe like I might see them sometimes in my office. Um took on a lot of leadership roles and that's our goal, right? And they were helping out the younger kids, making sure they were standing in line. It was pretty cool. So. So we'll do a kind of a mix of activities. Sometimes we'll meet in the gym and kind of sing the school song and do some fun minute to win it. Or do these classroom based activities. So they get to silently act out their favorite animal and the teachers get to leave it. No, just kidding. I didn't even put that in there for you. But I'm thankful that my staff entertained my crazy idea. So I appreciate that always. And with that, teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Perfect. Come and visit anytime. Come and visit, Mr. Excellent.
I'll see you, buddy.
I don't really have a lot on my report other than this is the team, this is the high level overview of the T F S, so the end of the year. Um reporting and on the one page, it'll give the high school. Um at the top and the other side, the elementary school. And so it gives you the beginning balance, total revenue we collected, what we spent out of there. And then the ending balance, you'll see there, you know, schedule of changes, line five balance sheet, line fifty-two, they're the same amount because that's our reserve. And so we went in with full reserves in all of our accounts. So that's why it shows those two lines are the same. If you didn't necessarily, those line items would be different. Um so I guess if you want more information to the friendly world of school finance. I can give you the full sixty page report, but I didn't think anyone was that. That interested, but if you have any questions or concerns. You know, I can surely print the whole thing. It seems like a lot of paper, so I just moved the overview there.
Does the this thing include monies from our district students?
So this year you don't get any of those monies for out of district student. You won't actually collect those until next year.
Oh, that's right.
So you had to file all the paperwork and do everything to kind of gauge. How many you had leaving or how many you had coming. So you have a year to kind of get an idea. If you were a school, a district that you know, hanging out at fun, you're gonna have to levy in that tuition fund, uh fund thirteen.
Okay.
Where we, you feel you don't really have a lot of money in there. We typically don't um levy in tuition. The tuition is typically for, you know, hi- your high need student or, you know, student. Now it's for out of district students, but before it was for students that maybe were, you know, high need. And they needed a special one-on-one or other things the district didn't provide. Um but we, you know, typically have levied in there. We just have some, you know, remaining money from when we did have some of those students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I have several things to say. Uh I also wanna echo something that Roxy said. We've, it's been an incredibly positive aspect of the school year. Uh I think again staff students, there's incredible energy and positivity kind of between the schools. I've been in elementary school uh as much as I have been able to. And uh here, it's just been really, really positive. So uh lots of, lots of good things to report about how we've begun the new year. Um last Thursday, I mentioned my uh occasion to catch the Sims bus friend alongside the road. But on my, one of my things I did that day was I I tried to go to some of the North Central Montana Association of Secondary uh of school superintendent meetings. And I always find them very interesting. They just don't always come at the most convenient times. Well, last Thursday, they had one. And the the bulk of the meeting, we had the two candidates for the superintendent of public construction. And um while I'm not here to advocate one over the other, they actually both were quite impressive. And I think we as a, as a school and the and the state of Montana, the the as far as the office public construction, that's been, uh quite frankly, quite a bit of disarray. There the questions asked both candidates, they they each one left the room. Um there's a a great awareness of the fact that there's great need to try to retain some of the people that have been quality O P I or failing left and right. It's it's alarming. Um and trying to provide provide some stability within the office public construction so that we can get good guidance on the, on, you know, where boots meet the ground. So um I was actually very encouraged. One of them is a current superintendent and one of them is a current state legislator. And so I I really feel like they um both have great awareness about what the way schools should be managed and the kind of support we need. So I was, it was quite encouraging that um I'm not quite sure who I'm gonna vote for and I didn't, I missed the very end of the one, the last candidate's comments. But again, I just wanted to give you that there's some encouraging word out there with the two candidates um who are gonna be on the ballot this fall.
There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
I I think so. I I and they both, they both commented about, there's some quality people that are that are kind of hanging on at the very end. Where are are trying to get out and they're trying to get them to stay to sort of stable the ship before the new uh management team takes over. So. I also wanted to report that we began, uh we revisited a a former tradition that the Portent High Schools had. We had an academic excellence assembly on August twenty eighth and um so this was highlighting the academic uh. Uh achievement of students from a full year grade point average perspective. And so unfortunately, we didn't have that assembly last year. So some of the students earned recognition for more than one school year. So this was just grades nine through twelve and we, you might recall last year, we had juniors and seniors attended a, a training called Figure It Out. And one of the things that came out of that training, the students talked to us, the the adults, about wanting to have recognition for academics. And so I told them that day when we got together that this is a result of your voice and and asking for this, cause it was something that they've, you've had in the past. So we had our first one and I I got, even today, I got some very positive feedback about the kid, students that really liked it. And um we hope to have one on the quarter or semester basis. We haven't made a final decision about that. We're gonna have some of these ongoing. And hope to make it uh uh an annual tradition moving forward. So I was really tickled by that. Um. One of the things that came across my desk and and Dusty and I had a chance to talk a little bit about it, you may have seen something in the paper. That the governor of Montana, uh Greg Gianforte, sent a letter to all Montana schools uh dated August twenty second. And um basically, I won't, I I attached a copy and when you get my board report electronically, you can see the whole body of the letter attached. You can read the whole thing. So I won't bore you with reading the entire contents of it, but basically what they're asking for is they wanted schools to remove, I quote, just. Remove distractions and disruptions in our schools, um a place where students should be focused on learning, I quote. Basically, what they, what they were asking, what he's asking for is first have cell phone free schools. And um two things interesting about that. So I I thought it'd be interesting for you to see what he asked of us. But we as a school, the staff, when we came back, we had an opening staff meeting. I talked to the middle school high school teachers. As a result of feedback I had gotten last year, that we needed to be, the the word I would use is more consistent. What you had was pockets where teachers were demanding kids turn in their phones upon entry and some that were much more loose with that. So we as a staff had agreed prior to receiving this letter um that uh two, a couple days before this. That we were gonna, I ordered phone holders. Um if you walk around the campus during the day when the doors are open, you'll see phone holders on the doors. And that some teachers are using it as their attendance method. When the kid comes in, they have to put their phones in the doors. And um so far, I'll get feedback at my staff meeting tomorrow about that, but from what I've observing. I I haven't honestly had any parent complaints. I haven't any student complaints thus far and so far my, from my perspective, it seems to be working pretty well. On the heels, on the same day, we received a letter from G uh Governor Gianforte. The Montana School Boards Association came out with their policy statement about what we should be doing in schools in relation to school cell phones. And interestingly enough, they offered three alternatives, two of which they thought were in the spirit of what he's asking us to do. One of them, if you're, if you're reading any of the school, uh the news about schools in Montana, some schools have gone and just completely said, no, no cell phones, period. And the second, and so that's one option that would that meets, obviously specifically meets the spirit of his letter, but the second one is what we are doing. And so the Montana School Boards Association has sent us a response that you can, you can do this completely self-free uh quote phones. Schools that are self-free, phone-free, you can have kids check their phones at the doors or you can just let them use their phones and teachers can make decisions. You know, as they go. That to the Montana School Boards Association is not in the spirit of what he's asking. So anyway, I felt pretty good about the fact that just two days before we got the letter, we'd already kind of made a decision as a school and again, I feel like it's, it's working. I mean, well, you know, that's my perspective. We should ask some of the teenagers who live in this buil- work in this building, but um so far, so good as far as I'm concerned. But I thought you might be interested to read the letter and know what what our response was um for this coming school year. Okay? Um the other thing you're gonna find in your packet. Is um I promised you at the August board meeting I would share with you just briefly. And I, again, I won't bore you with reading all the details. This is a small version of what you're gonna, with the attachment you're gonna get in my, in my uh board report. But I I should, I wanna share with you what my goals were for the school year that I shared with the teacher, teaching staff the day before school started. And some of the things I'm I'm gonna share with you that I talked about were as a result of the um appraisal you gave me last year. Things that you thought, you you gave me some encouragement to consider for the coming year. And one of the slides you're gonna, you're gonna see is what what they can, what teachers can expect from me. And um I built this picture that looks like a heart that has different words in it that I I feel like in my. Uh educational lifetime, these are things that I think I I've been passionate about and that I feel that I am. Um if anyone who knows me has ever worked with me will know that these, I I believe these are words that would describe my leadership style. So I I hope you find that that interesting and it's the exact same picture I showed last year, cause I said, nothing has changed. That's who I am. That's what I think I believe in. That's what, these are the things that are are important. And some of the words you're gonna find are flexible, positive, listener, um professional, fun, kind, caring. I threw in the one funny, but that's a personal perspective. So there's, there's some things I I hope the staff could expect from the new year. So the goals I had for the year was be present. One of the things that um I saw myself needing to do more of this year. That I've tried to do is be in the elementary school more often. Roxy's been feeding me more calendar invites. Um I feel like I I, one of the things I heard loud and clear when I came for my interview and when I was here on on the campus before I was hired, when I was hired. Was people wanted me to be present and so I tried really hard and I feel like I've done a pretty good job of that. I need to step it up a little bit more with the elementary school. Lots of hats to wear, lots of places to be, stretch arm strong is a real thing, but uh we're trying to make it work and so I can be over there more often.
More help you with that.
Yeah, and you're doing a good job. Thank you. I talked about classroom visits. It's an important thing that if I'm gonna be an educational leader, I have to be in classrooms. And I feel like what I told the staff was that I feel like I did a a pretty good job of, a really good job of that the first half to two thirds of the year. The last third of the year when chaos reigns and there's so many people who are gone and so many things going on, I apologize to them and that my, somewhat my. Task ahead of me is to try to be in classrooms more frequently. I do my morning walkabout and visits, but I'm talking about. Visits where I go and sit in rooms for fifteen, twenty minutes and give teachers feedback. Um be visible. One of the things that uh I, again, I feel like has been a hallmark of my career as a, as a leader has been to be visible. It's important to me. And I um that includes both in-school, out-of-school events and um my morning meet and greet is one of my favorite parts of the day. And I think it's important because parents will walk up and say, talk to me about certain things. Um I can interact with a a good cross-section of the student body. And I think those connections are invaluable. So um I can, I plan to continue to do that. Um one of the things we talked about was communication. I plan to, um following this board meeting, I've already started to put together, you're gonna see the board report. In this format and I, I'm gonna send it to you electronically tomorrow, but I'm gonna give the the staff a report about this board meeting tomorrow. And so I'll be giving them some highlights. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share with them the same Gianforte letter, for example. Um and there's another couple things on my list I'll be sharing with them and I'll just be giving them um. And the the paper does an extraordinary job of reporting about these meetings. I feel sometimes that I I think it's important that they hear from me, my perspective. And the way that the board meeting went prior to the paper coming out. And so that's a, that's a piece of suggestion I got basically, what I felt from your appraisal of me last year. So I try, I'm trying to to increase my communication. I feel like I do a pretty good job inside the middle school, high school, but I wanna increase that communication block. Across the district and uh with you. Um and the last couple points, engagement. Um again, I wanna look for um the engagement of students in our classrooms. But I also wanna make sure that um I, one of my goals for the year is trying to engage us more outside of our school walls and the community. And so we've begun to have some conversations. What does service look like for us and how can we be a more viable, um active uh member of, members of the community? Our students out in the community and I wanna help our kids be more civic minded. Um so um that's what what I mean when I say engagement. And uh finally, on a personal note, I said I wanna read more for fun, play more golf, travel and continue to enjoy life to its fullest. So. Um just a, just a quick summary of of what my goals are for the year. Like I said, it's embedded in my board.
I just had one question.
Sure.
The academic awards?
Yeah.
Love that idea. Did that come from student council then, gents, or?
Well, it was born out of this, this group when we got the middle, the junior high, juniors and seniors together last year. And you know, honestly, we had talked about it throughout the year and and there's just always so much going on. It's no excuse for us to not have it, honestly. We need to make time and so we we just decided, it was on my whiteboard in my office, we just made a commitment that we're gonna start the year by doing that. And it was like the, was it the fourth or fifth day of school we had right off the bat. So we recognize kids from their grade point averages from last year. And again, the the feedback in the student body was pretty positive, so.
Is the student council pretty active this year? Beating your door down?
I think they will be. You know, we have Mrs. Brown, do you have, didn't meet tonight. She's the student council, the new student council advisor. She's been a student council advisor before, so I think they're gonna be active and and I I believe moving forward, but yeah, sorry. You'll hear from her hopefully next month. Thank you. Um. Then um we had an interesting day yesterday because uh we all woke up to the thick air. That wow, it was, it was a really an interesting morning. And so um Roxy and I talked on the phone. I had to dash to a doctor's appointment early yesterday morning. We talked on the phone about should our kids go out and I'll give Roxy credit for, she did a little research and she, this is also attached to your board report. Uh Department of Environmental Quality and we, I believe it's a similar kind of a document that the Montana High School Association uses. That when we have unhealthy air that reaches above the number one fifty-one on this health effi- uh effect, effect category scale. Our kids should not be outside. So we chose to have elementary kids stay in for recess. We kept our middle school kids in. Um the number got up in Port Benton, got up to about one ninety-five uh at one point um and by the. Um the number got up in Port Benton, got up to about one ninety-five uh at one point, um and by the afternoon, I think it was down in the. Sit doubled, it's like seventies, sixties, it was, it was, right?
Actually got up to two thirty yesterday. Where do you find that? And it depends on where you look at it, so. Uh you know, you could look at it yesterday and it varied, so I kinda had to, we will have a sensor of our own soon. Um and and then I can add it to Wonder Ground, but if you look at your um, your apps, your weather apps. You can see it for like Wonder Ground ad that you just scroll down a little ways and it's down there. Um if you just Google, and and Apple, the Apple weather has it as well, if you go down a little way. If you Google the Montana DEQ air quality, it'll take you to a site. That was really bad. Our problem is sometimes, you know, down in the hole, like, it's like the weather, better down here, and then worse down here.
Department of Health and Family and Human Services is also listed as a, they must be on their website as well. So again, I'll credit Roxy for finding this document, and so this is what we would do using, you know, hopefully we don't have a day like we had yesterday. Again, but it's important that if, if you have to use data to to make a decision like that, then this is the kind of chart we would use, and that's what we used yesterday. And it was much better today. So I want, again, I wanna share with you, so you know what we were referencing when we made that uh decision. Okay? Um and then the final thing I have. Is, what was it, those are busts, they go. Alright, thank you. So Paul was unable to be here tonight, yeah, we can shift. And so he wanted me to share um the bus design winner for the vote that was taken online. And again, this is also attached to my notes, my meeting notes. Actually, this one is, this, I didn't attach, I just continued the picture. But this is the design that the. Uh folks that voted online chose. Um and I think Cal's already been a barter within about the, the actual Longhorn logo piece. I'll let you take that up with Paul. So I just wanted to, Paul asked me to share that with you. Um but in finally, uh mentioned uh. The P I R D on September twentieth, we don't have school, we're gonna be doing uh, Tenera Martin's gonna be doing a child protection piece. Because that's some, is something we should be doing every year, uh reminding our staff about our, our mandatory um. Uh we're mandatory reporters, we have issues related to child protection, and then as we mentioned before, um. The I D F A, Indian Act for All presentation, and that's on September twentieth. Um and then we began yesterday, the one handbook you have not reviewed yet, um has been the emergency handbook. And so Roxy and I, Rihanna Fultz, and Tenera Martin met yesterday for the first time, we're wordsmithing, we're going through some of that document. Um we have to create a new team that would be the crisis team, we have to look at some of the practices, what it says and what we're doing. Aren't always matching up, right? So we're, we're going through some of that, and we hope to have that back to you, probably not in October, but early this fall. Um so that we can have meet, meets with your approval, but we're in the process of reviewing that document. Okay, and there's some other dates listed in my report that you're, you can look at, it's your pleasure. That's, that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question that's somewhat up of it. Do we? We approved the final um gym use policy, right? Yeah, that was in your policy. Can you remind me what the hours were? Five, okay, if I can do it without looking, five to seven AM. And seven to nine PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday is five AM to seven PM, and Sunday was dark. Okay, so that, your policy before that. Only had morning hours, so we added the evening hours on the weekdays, and then we extended the all Saturday, and then it does day. As long as there's not an event or a school usage happening.
Okay, I had a question about why it starts on Sunday, and so I just.
And we did that for cleaning, start with, that's kind of what I reported, but I was, you know, we have it open. And then we, I don't know, like the teams are in there Saturday night, and it was happening again Monday morning.
And it takes Larry a while on Sunday to get all the locker room and the gym and the weight room and. It's hard to clean when there's people in and out, in and out.
Larry's in there quite often on Sundays.
Yeah.
And then there's people in and out, and it, it just drives them nuts.
Yeah, it was tiny.
Some point we, at some point, and I, and I'm the one that, I'm really. W- w- when, when, when are those people that wanna use this gym, when do they want the maintenance done on it?
Yeah.
At four in the morning, and it's getting old. So if I have Sunday, at least I have a day that I can get in there for a few hours and put a jack up there and start working.
Yeah, like I already have gym, I need a lift up, I need.
Yeah, that's what I told them was the reason, but I wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Yeah, I've had a phone call, I think Jamie said one phone call.
No, I, I read between the lines, but I figured that there were phone call.
But so, so far, so good.
Some of the places I can do stuff.
Next is our committee report, just um. Well. Schedule, let's see, we'll talk about scheduling after our conversation about the uh building ground, the committee report. So we kind of, I mean, we had this special, special meeting. Um after the building grounds meeting, but um I did put on here action items to discuss levy recommendations, so. That was, I really handled in this special board meeting, so.
Right, yeah, so we had uh three things, and one was uh. Handle the special board meeting, the other two are gonna make recommendations for, it's going to be a early levy, and then also. Money for three heating units needs to be approved. So then they all kind of blend together, because you're gonna wanna know how much you wanna spend on it.
At the high school.
At the high school, I'm sorry.
Uh we, I will, we are going to recommend doing an early levy. For a couple reasons, first of all, we need to have this out, the bid, the. The elementary plumbing and the high school electrical, if we decide to go that way. Need to be out the bid by March, and we need to have this money, know we have this money, that, we just kind of been. Kick of the can down the road, not committed to this sort, and so to wait till with May or June then.
May.
May, wait, would be too late, I feel, so. Uh the reason we wanna do it quick is it gives us a lot better opportunity to choose contractors. If we wait till past March, they're getting hooked up and. Um. The other thing is the bid prices have been increasing dramatically, we're quite a bit of money. More than we originally were bid on the job, so. But anyways, that would be the one thing I'd recommend. Uh the other one was going to be the three heater for the high school. Were approximately thirty thousand dollars a unit. So we're gonna need ninety thousand dollars approved for those three heating units.
And I was talking to him, I was raising this today, Brad, and they're still trying to narrow that down. Um they're still waiting for one supplier on some major component on that. So I'm hoping if we go into a, into a uh. Speculating meeting here within a week or something, then I would actually have it narrowed down. He's working on it.
So as far as uh. Early levy, what I've got for numbered right now is the elementary is gonna, plumbing is at six hundred thousand dollars. The elementary boiler issue is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The high school electrical, changing out this transformer and all the. New switching would be a hundred fifty-five thousand. And the three heating units would be ninety thousand for the high school. And that comes to a total of nine hundred seventy thousand dollars where I'm at, and.
What was the last one, Brad?
Uh the three heating units, ninety thousand on the three heating units.
How many heating units were we talking about originally?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Thirteen, thirteen, three thirty, yeah.
And have we gotten one since then?
Yeah, we've done one.
We've done one, so this would be two, three, and four out of thirteen.
And Russfield's, this, these three will get us through this winter.
Would they be going to that other wing? Yeah, the fifty-eight wing, it'd be the, the uh science room. Here across tomorrow's bathroom and the new Kelly bathroom down. The, the main kind of triangle pain use, usage.
I don't think I'm missing anything, the windows have been paid for, I see, it came in underneath the twenty-five thousand.
The lighting project already tackled, mostly, right?
It, it was a, I forgot to bring it up, um they are, they remeasured. Every time that you wanna do this, they wanna make sure that they get the exact, so he came back down, remeasured, and then we're.
Okay.
So they're, they're been paid for, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, the lighting project, I propose pushing it off and using money as we get it. Because there's always gonna be credits somehow or another. I mean, we can discuss it if you guys want, but I. I don't wanna go to voter for any more than we need to either, so.
So if we run a levy, it's going to be at least five years, probably ten years, depending on the amount. Or more, I don't know, but um three heating units only gets us. So, so I feel like we need to have that amount to include. The foreseeable future.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
We have still, nine more to go.
So.
That's correct.
How bad are the other guy, they're, you?
I done, they're fifty-eights and they're, they're, they're basically good and didn't work.
Oh, gotcha.
So we're, we're trying to keep heat going through them, but they're, they're all thermostat, but the motors are gone. The fins are gone, I mean, they're, they're, they're done, you know, they're, they're a battery.
They're not gonna gain cheaper. The other thing um is the high school plumbing work. Are we. Completing that now, or is there still outstanding high school plumbing work in the locker rooms that are not? That should be on this list.
I, I still, plumbing is pretty decent.
Pretty big job. Oh, we're decent as in we're in good shape?
Uh yeah, other than we're working on those plumbing issues up there in the locker rooms, but the rest of the plumbing. You know, we're, we're busting really good, and we go, pay for quite a bit of that already.
Yeah, we paid a hard bit of the, I mean, that was general fund.
But that was my question, is, did we got anything outstanding?
We spent, we paid ten thousand five hundred eighty-five is what I figure on that, on the showers to this point, so, which is. Also less than what we were figuring.
That doesn't have all the labor in there, we haven't gotten the bill from Blindset.
Okay, but I still figure thirty-five, and we're only at ten right now for, everything is showing up as paid as just supplies, is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, we have to pay for any of the labor or the repairs of like all the tile and all that.
And how do you think we stand as far as?
What about the intercap?
Interlocal to do that?
Well, you gotta pay your intercap loan back with your levy money.
Right, but as of right now, we haven't used any, any of that intercap loan, we have that five hundred thousand sitting there at the moment.
Just used for maintenance fund.
Well, we, do you think to finish, and for the showers, we'll have to start to use some, some of that?
No, we should, I mean, how, it depends on how it trickles in, but it should be all right. I mean, it'll, it'll wipe it out.
Right.
But.
That's a shower.
And when, and when Craig, you're waiting bills out.
Yeah, yeah, we need every now, if you get a bill in soon, for, yeah.
High school and the.
What about the roof in the elementary?
What's that?
I learned by the time they had a hundred twenty K for the primary elementary. For the primary.
Elementary roof leaks. For the case of. The elementary roof leak?
Yeah.
Are we putting that, is this going in towards levy money? That.
I think we're, not yet.
Pretty well packed.
Also, do you want up there?
I think that is pretty well done. Unless you guys wanna revisit that primary, but. Um I went up there early, way early on, and cut those bulbs out, scaled down a lot.
But the path, our wait and see and, and.
We haven't had anything, haven't had anything in that primary since then.
Right.
And I put a new tile up, telling them anyway, so.
Hmm, we did the tile in the hallway?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
It was just on our list, so we were, we didn't know that.
Yeah, that was the least that was showing up, but if you get those fixed, then that's a good thing.
Why?
Yeah.
We haven't had any.
So you fixed the tile in the primary wing, and then we haven't had any issues in the gym, that's always the big one, or right outside the library.
Library was one of those.
Yeah, the library one. And then how about the high school? I mean, we, we've had a little bit of discussion about roof stuff at the high school, but I don't know if there's any.
Or in time, we'll, we'll revisit that.
But we're talking about a levy that we need to run for the next ten years, I'm just trying to look ahead.
Right, right.
To, you know, I wanna make sure we ask for enough money to cover. The issues we're gonna have in the next ten years. I know that's impossible to know for sure, but.
Yeah, the other thirteen, that's what, be fifty. For the other thirteen, and.
Yeah. There were thirteen total and.
Three sixty? Two hundred seventy thousand dollars, you're gonna add nine more. Oh, yeah, and then you add the, three, thank you, all, the lighting, which was fifty. I recall.
What is the lighting?
I'm changing it all to LED. It was like two fifty, it was, it was a big number.
That's bigger than I remember, but I don't have that. I've been being a nerd, you know? We could building eight nights, and you know, wanting to room to hear, and eventually it exactly.
Yeah, the, the lighting actually was pretty dirty, then we basically.
It's a good idea.
We need to, like we did our flooring, just wanted to, we need to hear.
But just use the heaters. Shouldn't two seventy be packed?
Yeah, there's thirty thousand a pop.
So you had to run out the number one point three million, like one point, right?
Yeah.
Close, yeah.
Yeah. With the heaters.
That was a, or, that was a recommendation, was one.
And so have we done any breakdowns on? The mills for over five years, over ten years, what that would be like?
Have those numbers, that we all have those numbers from Bridget, and those are all still, that's the same. And what you have to do is you have to decide because of how our school district's footing. How much do you wanna levy, I think it was, how much do you wanna levy in middle elementary?
Hmm.
Mm-hmm, because those mills get all broken out.
And there is a certain, or a big sale developer calls for running a special levy?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Is that per school, I mean?
No, it'll be for the whole district, to deal, if you wanna run the, run a special election for your levy. Then you, you have to do all the districts. Because you're running high school and elementary money, and then we'll have to rerun the school election again in May. For the board members. And it's, it costs about six thousand dollars to run the school election, so I would figure that when you ran a special election, it'd be the same. And postage has gone up, so it might be a little bit more.
The elementary plumbing related issue, that's a hundred twenty-five, thousand and ten to high school. Electrical and heaters come to four hundred eighty-five thousand.
I thought the number in Bridget had where. But does she have, the, the mills are the same, whether it's the bond or. No, we don't.
Maybe I was just thinking of the word term, like, but, yeah, because you can run a levy for the interim. You can run a levy for ten or fifteen years as well.
What was your number, Brad? Nine hundred and sixty-five? Or?
Nine seventy.
Nine seventy, I was just adding up, without the, the extra meters. Nine seventy was just getting up without the extra meters.
We had the ninety thousands.
We have three of them in that.
Mile for the boiler and then.
Oh, hundred twenty five.
Yeah.
It's in.
It's in there.
That's the hundred twenty five.
Yeah.
So the number I was working off of from the heaters was three hundred and thirty thousand. If we had thirteen. Heaters originally on the list and we replaced one, right?
Yeah.
So twelve times thirty. I already took that heater out, okay? So actually, that needs to be a little higher than.
Two sixty.
It's five fifteen. Hundred fifteen thousand in the high school. How do you guys feel about running the levy in? January?
We'll talk to you, there's one week in January. Um, the O P I has cautioned us against. Um, running, and that's avoiding January twenty second, this is the day after a federal holiday. We're trying to avoid any type of mailing. Typically, elections don't go well during that period. Was your suggestion?
And actually don't see as we have a choice. Well, we gotta get these repairs done.
I feel like it shows urgency, I mean, it's. Not lumped in with the other elections, it's like. Communicating that, yeah, we have some urgency around this issue.
Is there anything stopping us from running it this year before end of December?
You could have filed with the Secretary of State's office, tell me, Dave. So if you wanna run this in January, I have to file next week. And then I have to check with the county.
So we have this, we have, we'll have this much time to put together. Sale heat for the community.
Yes, I have to file to get the um mail. Election approved by the Secretary of State, and then you have however long the the year.
If you run into a hiccup, I don't know why we can't run into the first week of February, I mean.
Would that give us enough time before?
In January, I'm just concerned, or yeah, I wanna do it in January, be done ready by March, but. It is in three weeks, it'll allow all the documentation ready.
Do you need to file next week?
Like even, you know, we're starting in a May election, all certain times for that stuff in January, I mean. Need to start way, way out.
So if we're gonna avoid that week of Martin Luther King Day, then it would take me the week of like the thirteen, or the week of the twenty seven.
Yeah, so it mailed out on the correct.
Having that election a week of that thirteenth sounds pretty good. That one bound to be mailed out.
No, so you you have to, what day you want him back? It gives people so many. Days, so it actually get mailed out. It's the first part of January, they had, I think, they get like fifteen days to mail it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want him landing during the holiday necessarily, and yeah. Tell one of that last year would be better.
Well, and there were people getting them in the mail right after. The Christmas and New Year holiday, getting about it, yeah, you know. That was my concern. With the last week in January.
Last week in January, it'd be like the twenty seven.
See that, it carries over to February, right, they get fifteen days.
Yeah, and then you're, you know, it would be due, you know, your actual election day.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so.
That would be it was both two and then start in March, two weeks and then start in March, so what if it went out like that? Twenty second. And then they would be back that first week of February. They got sent out.
They get sent right after the Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, get sent out right that after that week. That holiday, and then we can get him back before.
I mean, you can also, I mean, you can go over the holidays. That was just recommended, and then you try to avoid that.
Yeah. Yeah, if we can buy more time before March, I think that makes sense.
About the twenty second and then?
It'd be back essentially by almost the fifth before the February seventh, probably.
I can have an actual date.
So you're thinking return date by what? The seventh of February?
Yeah, it's.
Does it, it doesn't matter what day of the week it is, return date? Some think though, I mean, typically you have it on Tuesday.
But then even then, it'll get us into eleven, we still, that still gives basically the. Three weeks in the March to get our ducts to roll in.
So, the next thing we have to think about is how long the term we wanna run our levy for. And just for a point of reference, if we were to run it ten year by week. Um. So. Going back over the numbers that I wrote down, look, seven hundred and twenty five in the elementary and five hundred and fifteen in the high school. So the way we were looking at this before for housing. We had nine hundred and sixty in the elementary. Which would have come out to sixteen point three six mils. So we're gonna be somewhere less than that. Eighteen or something over ten years. Um, and then the high school. This is. A million, based on a million, um. Hundred and twenty five thousand, so. Um. Were, you know, less than half of that. And it was twelve point six two mils over ten years. So if you're in District One, you get hit with both, so I don't know. If the mark would be by half. Like if the mills are half, the money is half, I really don't know. Oh, yeah. So if we're thinking it's maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of six mils, you should be at twenty mil. For District One. You're doubling up. Which.
In layman's terms, what does that put a month or monthly added cost or yearly? Cost to taxes.
Okay, so you, um, Bridgette had done a nice little breakdown for us. If you own a three hundred thousand dollar house. We need to rerun these numbers with our.
I think.
Yeah.
If we, if we overstep our numbers with that million mark, it'll give us a really good idea.
Yeah. Um. We had a combined number before of twenty eight, so we're gonna be um at twenty, so we're gonna be less than that, but your. Your impact on a three hundred thousand dollar house annually was going to be a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventeen dollars. So it's gonna be.
At twenty eight mils.
And that's twenty eight mils, yeah, almost twenty nine mils, twenty eight point nine eight. So we need somewhere above that. And you have to consider that our current levy was about fourteen mils that is expiring.
Stuff about that.
Yeah.
It might be close to eighty four dollar day, that's presented by the.
And the hospital's also gone.
Which you can't tell because the property taxes are going up, so.
That seems like a pretty good give and take where our levy is disappearing, we're getting a new one. Hospital's off, and we need all this stuff done, so.
Yeah, I don't know. So, I think if we show. You know, I mean, I think we should still plan on some kind of public messaging, I don't know. In what form you guys think that should be, but. I think that we need to touch on, you know, the projects, there are some projects that need done, of course, but I think we should also talk about the projects that. Going to absorb. And I think we should also talk about the fact that we try to use our general fund money. Raise our teacher pay and be as competitive as we can and pay for education.
Uh, yeah, there's eight hundred teacher openings still available. Eight hundred. Big Sandy, the day the gentleman or one of our healthcare reps went down. Big Sandy didn't fulfill all of their teacher positions. So, I mean. Seeing that we're competitive and, I mean, we've we've got first rate education, we now need to get our children to be first blood.
Is that enough money? That's my place, sorry.
Take it to one point five or you go higher.
Or do you hate to push it too much, I mean.
One point, we, I mean, you could probably. Tell to the community one point three is our, like, hey, this is what we need. And we're doing our best to not making. More than that, and. Right?
Well, what we don't wanna do is run another levy on top of this levy. In the next ten years, so planning for a little contingency seems to be cool, but.
All costs go up all the time, so when we finally get these, they may be more than we thought.
I mean, maybe we should.
My only thought is like, if we do the lighting project in here. Then we'd have a levy to pay for that, and then we could have the funds that we paid for the lighting project to pay for other things to come up. We'd have to be. You'd have to, uh. You know, dedicated, so you're not just spending your, 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 keeping those funds for any day that you would have been putting towards the lighting project, but. At least that gives you some legal room if something else came up.
Well, that's the benefit of running a levy over a bond. Cause you do have. Because with the bond, you have to set in stone what you wanna spend it on, if you're in a building reserve levy. Any items of maintenance in the buildings. You can use that money for, like you said, if something did come up or, you know, like our boiler thing, it is like continually, yeah. You can use that money.
Well, we've got a little legal room because you, you were comfortable at that intercap loan of five hundred thousand, if we got turned down on the levy, you thought we could.
We should make it.
We could make it, so now we'll get a levy, you get approved. If we have a major disaster, we could go after another intercap loan. We got, we could make it at that five hundred thousand because. This intercap loan being covered under the levy, levy there. Right?
Yeah.
And you said we can make it.
Yeah.
If we didn't get the levy, or if we get the, if we get the levy.
Do all your project, yeah.
Right, and then if we have a disaster, go get another intercap loan and not have to go after a levy.
And your intercap might not be at five hundred, but you just provide your cost.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, we've got a five hundred thousand dollar, if we get approved, rather than going after more money. On this levy right now, I'd like to say it to one point three and get it. Get it. And then if something else blew up, we've got that five hundred thousand wiggle room in there.
Are we pretty comfortable, like, I know, so estimates are always supposed to be high. Are we pretty comfortable that these estimates came in?
We, we.
Probably like a fifteen percent, twenty percent.
We increased all of those over the base. And so that's what we're using.
Okay. On one point three, then if we needed intercap fallback, then.
Right.
That might be the way to go and sell to the community where, hey, we could be doing this, this, and this, and. But we're trying to keep costs down.
We could, I mean, to hit that one point three number, just for the sake of round numbers, we could do seven hundred and fifty in the elementary. Um, I had it at seven twenty five. And then, um. Instead of five hundred and fifteen, we could go to five fifty in the high school. And that brings us to the one point three. So, a little.
Yeah.
Tiny bit of.
Right.
Or you put some lights in there and. Bring the light money in and out. Or whatever.
Fifteen percent. Of one point three puts that. Basically, one point five.
Yeah.
I like the intercap idea to all time. And just get our base.
I just.
No.
I just like the one point five better.
Yeah. Is that one point five gonna be the breaking point, someone will say, no, I'm not doing a million and a half?
One four nine five. We did that in the last night. We did.
Did we?
Yes, we did, it was no, we didn't, we didn't go up to nine hundred thousand or a million, we came back under that eight hundred, and we were under eight hundred, we were seven ninety five. Whatever it is, there was a number there, so it didn't look like it was, we came down underneath it. By a little bit, just so that it sold better than it wasn't at eight hundred. It was right at eight hundred, but it was underneath it. And it was selling more.
What number goes on the ballot? It's it's the total number for the levy, not the mills, right?
Yeah, the dollar amount and the mill will go on there.
Okay.
It tells you, cause then you've gotta publish it.
One four fifty or something, so you just write it out.
Whatever.
This gets advertised correctly with the freedom of the press. Then. People will understand where all that money needs to go. Since it's gonna be itemized and hold the public of this what.
Well, I hope that we do, um, well, she was really good the last time we did a video and I did a tour and they video would be going down through and. Explaining all of that and actually doing a visitation to each one of these. Areas and showing what's wrong, so I mean, then they posted, then you got a lot of reviews.
I think a little part of my video, which is like so important.
They all want toilets that flush with their auditorium.
Yeah.
Yeah. They don't want that, yeah, right, they don't like that sewer smell, so, yeah.
How many people use the auditorium?
Absolutely.
And can you imagine not using the bathroom? Or, you know, C C P A, not be able to use the auditorium? You can't fix our plumbing.
Probably makes it harder to recruit new teachers too.
So is it wise then to build in some contingency?
Or do we have that, you don't have?
I mean, so fifteen percent contingency would put us at that. One, one point four nine five.
Okay, Bill, contingency, Gary built that in there and it did, yeah.
So this would give us another hundred ninety five thousand to one fallback on hospital lights. And I guess for the levy, do we, oh, so. We don't have to have anywhere for that money to go, but something might come up, right?
In ten years.
Oh, in ten years, we'd.
The other thing is, you're, you have to consider here is that you're going on bid estimate. And and engineers estimate.
Yeah.
That isn't where the bid's gonna come in at, we're hoping that it's underneath the estimate. But. You never know if you get, if they go over. And you can rebid that, but. That contingency would give you a little bit of budget. That that's a reality when you're dealing with numbers like that.
Yeah.
And projects that are invasive, as invasive as the elementary plumbing.
If it has to rebid, then you're losing.
Well, uh, one. One, one ninety five thousand extra, so how about one million?
Four hundred ninety five thousand would be the fifteen percent. Four hundred ninety-five thousand would be the fifteen percent contingency added, so how are you gonna split up that?
Split that in elementary versus high school.
Do it percentage-wise?
Yeah.
I'm not convinced that survey's gonna be that cheap. Inexpensive.
That's not cheap.
Well. That's a.
But yeah, it's, it has the potential to blow up.
Blow up, really good. Cause it, yeah.
It's gonna split that one ninety-five, hundred ninety-five thousand between the two buildings and or what's it?
It's elementary and eight twenty-three. Like six iron. And. So for the levies and one million, I have.
There's that too.
So. Six. Six forty-seven, so.
So you got eight one in, eight forty-three, six forty-seven?
And not the ninety-five.
That's.
Bella, do you wanna make a motion for me?
Um.
Now, the way you. We gotta separate out the motion, though.
Yeah, because there's. Yeah. For the elementary and for the high school. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we run a mill levy for that elementary. On January twenty-second. Or eight hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Second.
Eight hundred and twenty-three thousand over how many years? All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
All right.
Motion passes.
I'll make the motion to run a levy for six forty-seven for the high school district. Uh, to be run on January twenty-second for a term of ten years.
Second.
Need to stop, anyone? All in favor, say aye?
All right.
Motion passes. And I would just like to note that it's a lot of work for our office to do this, so we need. I will. Yeah, I'll be out of the office like a month ago, I remember.
She, yeah, it, that comes up to one four seven zero.
Seven zero.
Yeah, that's perfect.
It's, I.
That, that looks better than the.
Stupid iPhone, maybe it'll spin.
That's fine. As long as you went down the, up, yeah, she had that over here.
Right, yeah, and we just rounded this ups and downs and didn't carry that much stuff.
Works.
But it does look a lot more attractive than the nine-five. It's a nose.
So you wanna have a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, but you wanna wait and schedule it or you wanna try to schedule it tonight?
Um. I think I'll just have to talk to, uh, Callie, um, and Connie. Soon as I get that stuff from him, that we can go forward, um. I'll, I'll. I'll work with Connie and Kelly and.
Call it when you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think, I know the department and stuff like that, we'll just work around everybody's, to his warning, or whatever they need to do to come in and, and love it. And all, whatever. In our town, so I mean, it's, it's, um, evening's okay, um, evening's true, okay, all right. I just can't make Thursday, okay, it's on, all right.
Do we have any policies?
I got three days in our day.
I know, you talked about a minute, um, so. Our best people. Yeah. Is that over? That's for me, okay.
Yeah, and one, one is the regradoration thing, there's no rush on that. Has everyone got back of the, uh?
It was this.
It was the information about, uh, out of grant, out of district.
Even.
Students, and then you should think about whether or not we're gonna adjust the phone. They, they might have a school receptionist or something, she didn't approach you about it. I, I haven't, if there's any urgency to any of those. Right now.
I'm pretty flexible, if you want to schedule one, I just, like I said, I just can't do this Thursday. This, this coming year.
Or he's you next week, we got that some coming, it's an absolute nightmare.
That's my hot summer.
So.
You might get more in.
Yeah.
Uh, this is too late, but I heard, just thought of it, have you heard anything on this, where are we at on the intercap loan?
So I sent a bunch of back, um, information toward yesterday, she'd been out of the office for the last week. So we, hey, and I sent her more stuff today. So, she's trying to weed out. Lots of one-time expenditures we had in the last few years with the boiler project, and trying to add that back in because obviously you won't spend that ever again, that project. They're trying to come up with our true. Spending and make sure that we know we're okay.
Okay.
So, next is, um, any recommendations or hiring?
I don't know. I guess my hiring, yeah. Yep. Um, so, again, Paul's gonna be able to be here tonight, and so he would like to recommend the hiring of two bus drivers for activities, uh, Will Hucky and Amanda Brown.
Are they both activity drivers?
Yes.
Not manuals?
Yeah.
Let's, um.
Good. Second. I guess that again? All in favor, say aye? Post. Motion passes.
Now, as Russ mentioned, we've hired, we'd like to ask the boards, uh, blessing to hire Bob Yovers, he's a middle school, high school custodian, he's done a great job and. We're gonna run him in, him and Larry are key pieces of the budget. So appreciate your hiring of Bob Yovers.
Um, second.
Funny story, I met him in the hallway the other day and, and walked by and. Said hello and he said, oh, it's my first day, but I thought he said it's my birthday. But it, it'll be the library's birthday on Thursday. I will let out that the microphone. Okay. Anyone? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Okay, good. Future agenda items? All right, some I can move to, Jen?
So moved.
We'll be in here by forty-five minutes.